Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, May 16th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square. We begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance and invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we begin our meetings with public comment, and no one has signed up to make public comment. Anybody interested in making public comment? Nope? All right, so we will move on to a fairly lengthy consent calendar. And Commissioner Cameron, I understand that that is...
I'm glad you understand, Madam Chair.
Yeah, no problem.
All right.
One of us has to be on top of things.
I can't even get up to the right level. I think CM put me down lower this morning. Madam Chair, I'll move the consent calendar and the Board of Commissioners approve a reinstated intergovernmental agreement with Polk County for the creation of the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network to provide management of regional behavioral health care services. Under Community Services, approve an order appointing Lisa Harnish to the Marion County Children and Families Commission with the term ending January 31st, 2022. Under Public Works, schedule a public hearing for mass gathering 18-002 White Wind Woodland LLC for June 13th, 2018. Also under Public Works, schedule final consideration to adopt administrative ordinance granting Zone Change Comprehensive Plan Amendment, ZCCP 17-00, Helms for May 23rd, 2018. Also under Public Works, approve a public improvement agreement with Roy Hawk Construction LLC for $599,390.50, make sure we get that in there, for the 2018 resurfacing package. Also under Public Works, that time of year, approve a public improvement agreement with Knife River Corporation Northwest for $1,963,644 for the 2018 resurfacing package. Also under Public Works, approve a public improvement agreement with North Saniam Paving for $2,071,289.80 for the 2018 resurfacing package. Also, under Public Works, approve a public improvement agreement with Apply Align LLC for $848,380.28 for the construction of Marion County Local Roadway Departure. Also under Public Works, approve the public improvement agreement with Knife River Corporation Northwest for $189,891.17 for the construction of Silverton Road Campus Paving. This may be a whole bottle of water consent calendar. Under the Sheriff's Office, approve an order setting a final public hearing for June 6th, 2018 to consider the addition of law enforcement services to the East Salem Service District. Finally, under the Treasurer's Office, approve an order distributing Oregon State Forestry Timber revenues as per ORS Chapter 3, 530.
A second motion, just with one comment. That one on the Apply Align LLC, that's for additional side lane and rumble strips that may have saved my life once already, so I'm pretty confident it's a good thing and I'm happy we're expanding it. Anyway, a second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve these items. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 They are approved. All right, we have our first items under Business Services, consider ratification of the 2018-2020 MCJEA collective bargaining agreement. We have Colleen Kuntz-Chafens, Troy Gregg. This is the Marion County Juvenile Employee Association? Did I get that right?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Colleen Kuntz-Chafens, Business Services Director, and with me is...
Troy Gregg, Marion County Juvenile Director.
This morning, we're here for you to consider ratification of the Marion County Juvenile Employee Association, otherwise known as MCJEA, 2018-2020 collective bargaining agreement. Attentive agreement was reached on April 12th, 2018, and the members of this union ratified it on April 24th, 2018. I'll now summarize the changes to the contract, and you should have a copy to follow along and if you have any questions. The bargaining team members were numerous, and we made sure we did a great job. So I wanted to thank all the members of the bargaining team for their time and effort spent on this effort, and I'll get to that later, but I just wanted to make note of that. The list of changes begin on Article 4. This is a collective bargaining agreement. It is a two-year agreement effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. On Article 4 of the Hours of Work, Section 2, Page 3, we moved a reference to 12 hours since there's no longer 12 hours that exist for the employees in this work group or two position. Under Section 5, under Shift Selection Subsection E, Page 4, we increased the number of opening bid slots and postings from three to five, and Troy can expound on that later, unless you have questions now. Article 6, Holidays, Section 3, Commissioners' Day, you memorialized the annually day granted off as given by the Board of Commissioners. It's one regular work shift to be taken between November 15th of each year and January 31st of the following year. Article 7, Vacation Leave, we made some adjustments to the... It speaks to the accumulation of vacation leave. The Board recognizes the value of their employees and the ability to better recruit and retain staff. Increases were made to the accumulated rates for the employees in the following years of continuous service. After six months of continuous service through third year, four hours per pay period, after the third year to fifth year, it's 4.308 hours per pay period, and after the fifth year to 10th year, it's 4.9 hours, point two four of the hours per pay period. We removed the reference to the calculation of vacation accumulation as the employees in Group Worker 2 no longer work the 12-hour shifts. Employees in 10-hour shifts accumulate vacation hours similar to the employees in the eight-hour shifts. In Article 8, Sick Leave, Sections 3 and 7, we updated a reference to the section within that article. Article 10, Health and Welfare, Section 4, Employer Health Insurance Contributions. County health insurance contributions are $1496, $1,496 for... I'm sorry, current year, for 2019, and $1,546 for the year ending 2020 or beginning 2020. In Article 11, the Wage Adjustment, there was a cost of living adjustment, 2% for each of the effective years 2018 and 2019. Article 13 on Overtime, Section 5, is really just some cleanup language there. Article 35, Life and Term of the Agreement, is a two-year agreement, 2018 to July 2018 to June of 2020. Section 2, if a new collective bargaining agreement is not reached by July 1st, the agreement may be terminated. Section 3, any letters of agreement also must be signed by Human Resources or Designee. We also cleaned up some language in the Shift Trade Letter of Agreement, and Troy can speak to that a little bit later. That was also renewed for the same terms of the contract, and we added language that should shift trade be abused. We want to make sure we are addressing that in the contract. Those are the changes that we made, and just as a note, for a comparable, we do... We aligned our COLAs with our comparable counties of Clackamas, Jackson, Deschutes, and Lane, per county policy, and so that's how we made our comparables and did some research on that as well. So Troy?
Yeah, I want to thank, again, the bargaining team for the opportunity that we had together. This was my first time bargaining with this particular group, and it felt like I set a little bit of a record with how quickly we went through the process. It became pretty clear early on what they were hoping for, and we were able to, like I said, maintain management rights throughout the process as well. And so it was a good team, I think, that got together and had some good discussions, and I appreciate the comparables, which helped us to make some decisions and bargain well. A couple different things, and again, it's really just determining whether you guys have additional questions. I can, like I said, clarify the open bid slot, what happens when vacancy occurs within the county. The staff get to bid based on seniority, and originally we had three rounds. If they went through that, we've opened that up to five rounds. It doesn't impact us as management service to kind of do that process, but it gives the employees a little bit more opportunity to flex and get into shifts that worked for them and their family. The second piece that we talked about on the backside is the Shift Trade Letter of Agreement. That was a cleanup for us and also a benefit for us. The key thing for us is that we didn't want staff to continually be doing shift trades that people called out sick for, weren't doing it, and that's why the language of abuse came into that piece of it, is that if people were continually kind of using that and taking advantage of that situation, then we could limit the amount of shift trades that they did. Any questions for us?
Yeah, I do have a question. Okay, here. Nope, we lost it. What... Where is the health insurance piece? There it is. So what are we at right now for health insurance?
We're at $14.54.
Okay, so this is $50?
Well, I... Let me back up. I think it's $13.96. So the first year, it's $100 because the other unions were at the $14.54. So it's at $13.96. It goes to $14.96 and then $50 in the next. $14.
I think it's $50 each year.
Is it $50 each?
Yeah, so they should be at $14.46 now, and then it goes up $50 each year.
I thought... Okay.
Okay, so it's a $50 increase per month per employee?
Correct.
In year one, and then another $50 in year two? And then a 2%, and a 2%?
Correct.
In terms of the cost of living increase? All right, very good. So, yeah, I just, first of all, I want to thank you. I know that this is always an interesting time when you're negotiating union contracts, and it's time-consuming, and oftentimes it's anxiety-provoking, I'll have to describe it, on both sides. So to be able to resolve this, I think, is great. I do want to make sure that the employees are aware, and I hope you're emphasizing this, Troy, that this is a very generous contract for them, and so we're... And I think we talked in prior meetings about the fact that with those comparables, the employees were already at market. Is that correct, Colleen?
They were just below market because Lane County in one particular had given their employees a raise, so it...
Right, but with the two and the two, they're definitely going to be...
Correct.
At or above market?
Correct.
For the next two years, so...
Yes.
So that's why I'm saying that it is a generous offer, so...
Yes.
I want to thank you for working through it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple comments. I think reference was county policy. I want to make sure that we're clear that it's state policy that requires us to use other counties to compare.
It is state policy that does that, but our internal county policy requires us, by our compensation board that we had some time ago, about in '15, we did a compensation study. That board recommended that we go to at least four... Well, at that time, it was seven comparable counties, and when we looked at this a year and a half later, it was actually diluting our ranges, and so we agreed and came back to the board and asked about comparing to the four counties that we had started with, and we're right back to where we need to be, but...
Right, but I just want to be clear that it's collective bargaining agreements that are collective bargaining statutes that require us to use other comparables. Second thing is, you mentioned shift change abuse. How do you clarify or define what abuse is in the contract?
Yeah, and the contract's real specific as we work through those things ultimately, and the discussion also with our Labor Management Board. It's when people repeatedly move through and... So on shift trades, you're trading one day for the other day, and so then, when you aren't accountable for the day that you're supposed to be coming in, and so people continue to do that, so they may trade off and get the longer weekend or whatever it is, and then they don't come back and actually fulfill their part of the shift trade ultimately with that, is we wanted to make sure that there is provision in there for us to be like, okay, if we're having people that repeatedly doing it, there's times when obviously people get sick or emergencies come up, but when people are taking advantage of getting that extra day off and then turning around and not fulfilling their other end of it, and then the other employee is the one that ultimately ends up being on the hook for it because they have to come back and work that shift that they traded, then we have that ability within the contract then to approach them and say, listen, here's where it is. You need to follow through with the shift trade that you've agreed to, or else we're going to be limiting shift trades in the future, and we can limit that language, you know, however we want to, six months, you know, and we'll give you a try again, or a year, or that piece of it.
Thank you, Troy. So it would be documented to that individual, not to the whole group?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I could clarify one thing, I wanted to go back to Article 10 real quick. I wanted to answer the question. Article 10, Section 4 is our... The Health and Welfare. The county agrees to contribute in the red line version, $1,396. So it was $13.96 in our... In that first year, in '17 when we did this, so it is going to the $14.96, and then $15.46. It was that $100 the first year because of the contract, and 50 the following year, so I just wanted to clarify that. They had the same rate that MCEA or Marion County SEIU had.
Thank you.
Questions?
Well, just going back to Troy and what Commissioner Cameron's asking about, so the effect of that is you don't maybe know who's there, who's supposed to be there on a given day, and does it imply some overtime impacts too to fill in those shifts?
Yeah, and that's... So it's documented when people do shift trades, so you know who's supposed to be coming in that day. But like I said, what happens occasionally, and I've dealt with this in my previous job as well, is just making sure that, like I said, people aren't calling in out on those because it does. It creates more overtime. It creates inconvenience. It's a burden and a hardship on the person that they shift traded with because the responsibility falls to is that regardless of whether, if you and I shift traded together, if I didn't follow through with it, it's still your shift to own, so you end up having to be responsible to get that shift either covered by trying to call somebody else in to do it or coming in and do it yourself. And so shift trades are good for us because it does help with morale. It helps staff to be able to shift and take time off that we would not necessarily have enough staffing to cover with that piece, so it's a good thing for both management and staff to be able to have those shift trades. But it's also very important for us to make sure that we protect ourselves and protect our staff, that they're not putting themselves and us in a situation that's actually costing us money to be able to allow them to do that.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair, then I'd like to make a motion that we do ratify the MCJEA collective bargaining agreement for 2018-20.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to ratify the MCJEA collective bargaining agreement?
Oh, what? I thought something felt wrong.
He's French. She says J in French. All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider recommendations from the 2018 Marion County Compensation Board, and we have Colleen Kuntz-Chafens and Richard Berger.
Richard.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Colleen Kuntz-Chafens, Business Services Director, and with me is...
Richard Berger, Chair of the Marion County Compensation Board.
So this morning, we're here for you to consider recommendations from the 2018 County Compensation Board. In accordance with ORS 204.112, the Marion County Compensation Board meets annually to review and make a recommendation for the compensation schedule for the county's elective officers. The Board met on March 7th, 2018, reviewed the elective officer's compensation, and according to the county policy, used our comparatives, who include Clackamas, Deschutes, Jackson, and Lane Counties as a basis for their recommendations. The Board is made up of volunteers from our community, and they are Chair Richard Berger, Steve Bergman, Carrie Klosterman, Sandra Fixon, and Jan Kullavite. Several HR staff also serve on this committee, and I'd like to thank Angelique Flores and Erin Carney-Bell for all the work compiling the data and working with our board members to get that accomplished. I'll now turn it over to Richard, the Compensation Board Chair.
Thank you for having me here, Commissioners. Just a quick summary of the work of the Board this year. Hopefully, you got a chance to review the information we had in your packet. Generally, we stuck to the Board policy of moving the salaries to the mean wherever possible. Most of those positions received an increase, two of them that were not shifted to the mean. One was the Justice of the Peace, which was already above the mean, so we didn't reduce that, and then the other was the Sheriff, which was dealing with the issue of having someone under them, potentially going above their salary, and that violates state law, was our understanding, so we picked a number that would make sure to... That that didn't happen. And we also recommended the 1.5 COLA, which is consistent with the executive staff at the county.
That it?
That's it.
Great, well, thank you. We thank you for your service and for the service of all the Compensation Board members. I've only gone once before the Compensation Board in 16 years, and that's when I was making a case, I think. Was it last year or the year before? Probably the year before.
Year before.
Yeah, and I think that it's an interesting process when we deliberately seek out people who have a strong HR background to serve on that so that they can understand the nuances of the types of things that Colleen was describing in the last union contract discussion we had about comparables, and it's a little bit more difficult, I think, in the elected officials realm to find comparables in Oregon because the counties are so very different. I mean, Clackamas County, obviously, is a much larger county, has five commissioners. Lane County's about the same size, but they're a timber-dependent county, and they've done some odd things for one, for a technical term, over the past several years. I mean, they shored up some of their existing positions and didn't hire additional positions, which then kind of skewed the salaries because they were trying to retain employees in a climate where their budget was really at risk for a number of years because of the whole secure rural schools and the elimination of federal funds. And then, of course, you have smaller counties like Deschutes and... What's the other one that we use? Jackson?
Jackson.
Right, yeah, which are... Yeah, Jackson's timber-dependent, Deschutes is timber-dependent, Deschutes is in central Oregon. So anyway, you start, you know, so trying to find exactly the same positions that do the same work with the same scope, I think, is challenging. So I can appreciate the work that you do here in trying to analyze all of that and make the best decisions that you do, and I think that it was a good clarification also that we had last year that the role of the Compensation Board is to do that technical work to make sure that those positions are as close to the mean as possible, and as you talked about, there are always some outliers or anomalies to that, but not necessarily to make political decisions around the county budget and whether or not they feel that the positions are worthy of the increase, which I think was part of the discussion in prior years, and we corrected that, so I can appreciate that as well. So any other comments that anyone wants to make?
Oh, it's me. I don't know really how to say this right, but I'll try anyway. Typical of me. I heard we had some dissatisfaction that the Commissioners didn't come and make a presentation, and I can only speak for myself. I've never gone, nor will I ever. It's a real uncomfortable subject for me to begin with, and I'm just happy to leave it to an independent group to make the decision for themselves, so just to explain that absence, I wanted to bring it up.
And I'd like... Sorry, can I comment on that? There was some discussion in our Board. It... I think it was important to the Board to try to better understand the positions and see from the elected officials if anything was off. We felt that was potentially valuable input, and sometimes things came up, and without having you guys there, we felt like, man, do they feel that this is equivalent? These are the experts in the field, and I realize it might put you in an awkward position, but that was the conversation. It wasn't... It was just an opportunity for us to information-gather that if you're there, there's an opportunity for the Commissioners to say, we're seeing this a certain way. What do you guys think as elected officials who know what Polk County's officials are like, a little... Maybe a little better than us. There's only so much digging we can do. So that was kind of the discussion of... And I think just the year before, a lot showed up, and so this year, one didn't, and that may just be an anomaly of one year to the next, so it felt a little, wait, for people who are on just like two years at a time, you're kind of like, is this historically different?
I'm not trying to criticize them. Just trying to explain for myself, and I don't want to put undue influence on the decision. That's why I won't be there.
Absolutely.
So, Madam Chair, if I may. So, Richard, I really appreciate those comments. I would be happy to have somebody come and spend a day with me or come before a committee and explain what I do and have them look at my schedule and see the hours that I put in to do this job and all the things that we do. To educate, I'd be happy to do that, but when it comes to my compensation, I just... I really do want to stay away from having that kind of input and decision. I will take... As an elected official, I'm serving the people of Marion County. They're the people that hire me, and I just... I don't think that that's a place for me to come and say, I don't get paid enough, or I need to get paid more, or whatever. As a servant, I'll just take what I get, what I get, and what you decide, what that Compensation Board... But I'd be happy to educate. It was really great. The last two days, I had a gentleman from Ukraine that... I think I wore him out on Monday.
He looked a little bored, but...
I wore him out on Monday with our schedule and what I do, and of course, it wasn't even one of those where I was out at night, right? So be happy to educate or participate in some way of education, and maybe there's a way to do that next time that would be appropriate. But I do, I'm kind of like Commissioner, I don't want to have anything to do with those of lobbying for compensation.
And one way I might suggest is we did a training for new Board members and anyone else who wanted to show up months before we met to actually decide, and maybe that would be a good time for you guys to come and have some conversation.
Exactly. That's perfect. Right, they can ask questions.
Say what you do, and how did this process work last time?
Most people ask me, you know, what's a Commissioner do? I say, we commission things.
Well, and I think the other piece of it is that we need to work more closely with staff, or the Business Services staff need to work more closely with the Board Office staff if they want us to be at something, to get that on our calendars.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, because I know I book out six weeks in advance easily, and so when I get something on email that says the Compensation Board's meeting next week or in two weeks or whatever, and I look at my calendar, either I'm going to have to disappoint someone else or cause our staff to move a bunch of things around to make that possible, and I think I was even out of this... I was at a national conference, I think, out of state or whatever when that was going on, so I wasn't even available, so anyway.
Thanks for your service. Really appreciate it.
Right, so the scheduling part of it, I think, is the other piece, and I was going to mention too that John Latimer goes to these meetings every year. He is intimately engaged in the affairs of the Board. He understands what we do, so he could speak for us at any time to answer those questions about what we do and what we don't do, and I would feel very comfortable with him doing that, so...
John and Jan have both participated in our meeting, so we've had the county attorney at our education session to help do that as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think it's important for the Board to know, for your advisory board to know, that they have to vote on this eventually when it comes to the Budget Committee, and then they have to adopt the budget. So it's really difficult because that's why your committee was set up to... So they aren't setting their own salaries, and so it becomes kind of a difficult thing for them to then come in and talk about getting their salaries increased. So if you ask them to be there, I imagine they will, but it puts them in a really awkward position.
All right, the other elected officials aren't voting on the budget, so...
Yeah.
All right.
So can we just discuss really quick? There's four options here, and number three says to refer the county compensation recommendations to the Budget Committee?
Right.
For further consideration? That's the one that...
Yeah, that's the one we do.
Okay, great, versus the approval?
That's typically what we do.
Versus number four.
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, I will move that we refer the County Compensation Board's recommendation to the Marion County Budget Committee for further review and consideration, at which time the County Compensation Board's recommendations shall not become effective and shall be a recommendation to the Marion County Budget Committee.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I want... All right, we have a motion and a second, I won't read it again, but it's number three on our issue brief. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 And that's approved, thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Appreciate you coming here today, too.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
All right, next item is under information technology. Consider approval of the purchase order agreement with CDW Government LLC for $180,395 for firewall module replacement. And Scott Emery, you are alone here, so.
I am. Thank you, good morning commissioners, I am Scott Emery with the Information Technology Department. And we are here to request consideration for approval of the county's firewall service module that protects the county assets and information by monitoring and assessing data traffic in all of our networks. The procurement itself actually combines two different capital improvement projects that we have funded for this fiscal year. It's related all to network equipment. And the rationale behind that is, is because there's consolidation taking place in technology, which allows us to put multiple functions into one appliance instead of having multiple parts. The parts in particular that we're replacing is our firewall module, which helps again monitor and assess the traffic coming in and out of our county networks, as well as our web filtering functionality that helps suppress the malware that spreads so rapidly through our computer systems at times. The request in total is $146,000 in capital equipment from current fiscal year funds, as mentioned, as well as $34,745 in hardware and software maintenance that's ongoing that's related to our existing department budget. Any questions?
Just a little crazy question here on the issue brief. So it says after September 30th, 2017, the software will no longer be available, but it's after that right now, so.
The, that's related to our end of life, existing equipment. Equipment does term with our vendors and that means that they no longer give support or provide updates. This is software patches. So of course, it being an end of life, we are at that critical juncture of actually replacing the equipment to make sure it again is under support. So that note is in reference to the existing equipment.
Okay, so we can get the equipment that we're talking about here.
Yes, that's correct.
I just wanted to make sure. It's like, what? Okay.
I have one minor question, not about doing it or not, but just about the installation and downtime, will it be any impact on the system as this is being put in?
Right, that's a very good question. The answer is that we should not see or assess any kind of impacts. Any kind of quote-unquote downtime would be on non-critical periods of the business. And of course, we still are 24 by 7 operation, we'll make sure that we notify any of those stakeholders of any kind of glitch or outages. Typically, we're pretty good about being able to do cutovers where it's pretty seamless, where people don't notice.
I know whenever I try anything, it doesn't work like that, that's all.
That's our goal.
Well, Ken, welcome, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, Ken Pearson, Marion County IT Operations Manager.
Anything you want to add to the discussion?
Scott did a great job. We do try to minimize the outages as much as we can. When we do have outages, we notify folks right up front. And so it's planned and scheduled and try and keep to those, so, yeah. I think you guys saw the demo of that equipment, it's fantastic equipment compared to what we're running today, the new firewalls. It adds a bunch of functionality that we don't have today that will help make us more secure.
Will I stop getting all those spam emails now?
No.
Just asking.
We're hoping it reduces the amount, yes.
It may help minimize them, but it won't stop.
I think you mistake, it's Sam and spam. They're not distinct in spite of what you think.
I can't block Sam's emails.
Oh my. I think John's.
Madam Chair, you asked a very good question about the equipment. One of the things that Scott is putting together and we've asked for for several years is a life cycle plan for all of this equipment and all of our software. The problem is that technology changes so quickly and so fast and these companies come and go. I mean, they literally, company A will buy company B and it just changes everything. So we have to be on top of it all the time.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd make a motion that we do approve the purchase order agreement with CDW Government LLC for $180,395 for firewall module replacement.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and you're promising not to send me any of those Sam emails then, right?
We're done.
All right, great. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 It is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, this morning.
All right, last item, and I'm very excited for this item. This is considering approval of a proclamation recognizing May 16th, 2018, a stepping up day in Marion County. We have Sheriff Jason Myers, District Attorney Walt Beglow, and Health and Human Services Administrator Carrie Muller. Good morning.
Morning commissioners, for the record, I'm Jason Myers, Marion County Sheriff. And seated next to me is Walt Beglow, District Attorney. And on his right is Carrie Muller, Health and Human Services Director. We're here today to recognize and ask for a proclamation around stepping up day. As you probably remember, in 2016, Marion County became a stepping up initiative county and the stepping up initiative is aimed at reducing the number of people with mental illness in our jail, and I would extend that in our criminal justice system and connecting them with community wraparound services where they're better served. So I'm going to let Walt set the stage and I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've done and then Carrie's going to talk about the outcomes.
Good morning, thank you Sheriff, Madam Chair, members of the board and all our community members listening out there. We are really honored today, this is a day of action, but in Marion County around the challenges we face in mental health and mental illness and the public safety system are paramount. And we have an enduring commitment that goes back a generation here in Marion County trying to address that really critical intersection of those impacted with mental health concerns and the public safety system. And we could not care more about changing the trajectory for those impacted with mental illness in our community. I really like to be a part of this team, this is really a privilege here to have your sheriff, your health leadership, your district attorney and your board in one room, really kind of rowing in the same direction to reduce those with mental illness in our jails and then find community supports for them, really brings together probably one of the most compelling issues in public safety. And having been in public safety for 30 years now here in Marion County, I think this is one of our top priorities. There's a couple of things we've really recognized. And the stepping up initiative, what it allows us to do is really kind of bring under one roof all of the great things that are going on and align some of these efforts from our mental health court to our court, our crisis outreach that you've all heard about, our mobile crisis, all these different pieces that we're going to talk about today. What we know is, is that incarcerating, putting people in jail who have mental health diagnosis or concerns is detrimental to their health. And for the most part, those who have committed minor offenses, who have mental health concerns, get worse in jail and they should not be in jail. And we can find community treatment, support, housing, wraparound resources that really are more effective in so many different ways. And so that's the message here. We're, we as a team here want to ensure that our jail and all of the assets we have working in Marion County, we prioritize them. We don't need to use our jail, we can use other means to change their lives. And so that's really the starting message, we've recognized that here in Marion County. We have great things moving forward and stepping up allows us to step forward with that initiative. So with that, I'll turn it back to the sheriff to kind of talk about what those points are that we have set in motion.
Thank you, Walt. I can't underscore the emphasis around the collaboration and the leadership that it takes to move these programs I'm going to be talking about. And we've been at it for well over 10 years and we're continuing to evolve, we're continuing to build the system and make it even better. But it's been that collaboration with the Board of Commissioners, with our Health Director, with the sheriff, with the district attorney and our local law enforcement, all working together on this issue because it takes all of us working together to build these programs and help these people in time of need. We kind of got our first foot in the door with this issue and we started on the front end of the public safety system, which is law enforcement, where people come into contact with individuals that have a mental health concern. We started with crisis intervention training, which is a 40-hour training. It's a national model around identification, identifying when somebody has a mental health concern, de-escalating the situation and then referral to services. To date, over the 10-year period, we've trained in excess of 600 law enforcement officials, both within our county and outside of our county. That training continues, it's held twice yearly. And again, it's a collaborative effort of all the stakeholders working together to do that training. So we started with that training and then we added our court crisis outreach response team. That's a deputy that's teamed up with a clinician that takes referrals from law enforcement of low-level offenders who are coming into contact with law enforcement quite often. What we do is we meet them where they're at in the community and we connect them with services. And this partnership between law enforcement and a clinician works magnificently because you bring the best of both worlds together. Through the help with the state, through funding, through OHA, the Oregon Health Authority, we've added mobile crisis teams. These are sheriffs, deputies, police officers from the Salem Police Department, Woodburn Police Department, that are paired up with these clinicians and they actually respond to calls in the now. So if a crisis call comes in or a call involving somebody that has a mental health concern, that law enforcement officer and clinician respond in the moment, de-escalate the situation and refer the individual to resources. We found this program to be working magnificently and the outcomes have been less people going to jail, more people being connected to services, which is a good outcome for the community and a good outcome for the individual. We also began to realize that not at all times are these specialized teams in the law enforcement section on duty and able to deal with folks. We found people still coming into our jail with mental health concerns with lower-level charges, as Walt mentioned. And what we really try to do is ramp up the services out of the jail. So we have four clinicians that work out at the jail that cover seven days a week. So if somebody comes into custody that has a mental health concern, we're able to, they're able to access services with the clinician. One of the other things we added, and it's been more recently in the last two years, is we have a prosecutor that specializes in the behavioral health individuals. And her job is unique, it's not to really prosecute, but it's to connect to services. It's to monitor those that, individuals that are in the state hospital and ensuring that we're passing information and making the best decision with those individuals and when appropriate, getting them released as soon as possible and connected to services. That position itself has been fabulous addition to our system. And then the psychiatric crisis center, that's been in existence, I think, for over 20 years. It's probably the only center like its kind in the nation. It's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. That's a drop-in center that people with mental, with a mental health crisis can walk in, they can be dropped off by law enforcement and they can connect with services. And it really, that is the central hub that all of our services work out of because that's where we can make connections for medical providers and wraparound services. We couldn't do this alone, while there's great partnership at the government level, we have a lot of nonprofit organizations that come alongside of us. Bridgeway Recovery Services, Northwest Human Services, the Salem Free Clinic. There are a variety of different other nonprofit organizations that partner together with us and provide these services. I would tell you, I have the opportunity to have traveled around the state. We are the gold standard in our state around the stepping up initiative and diverting individuals with mental health concerns out of the criminal justice system. And Carrie's going to talk a little bit about our outcomes.
Thank you Sheriff Myers, Carrie Muller again, Health Department, Human Services. So I just wanted to underscore the message here today about our collaboration and the direction and leadership from the executive level here, including the support from the board's office to make these changes. What I think we're talking about are, is a cultural shift and a system level change to think differently about how we respond to people who have mental health challenges. Together with the leadership here and across the state, we are considered the place to go to and learn from. We have people who come to this community all the time, who want to learn and sit with us and see what's working. Some of the changes we've made that the sheriff and the district attorney are talking about today are, people around the state are looking to replicate those because of the success of our service. And I wanted to say that our community is stronger for the efforts that we're making here collectively. When we can serve people in the community, in their homes, wrapped around the services and supports that they get in their community, it makes the community a better place and it allows the criminal justice system to focus, put their energy where it should be with those folks who create the most risk for us in our community. And I think these wonderful teams and this collaborative effort that we've brought together, sometimes we think about it as these big interventions, but really it's the day-to-day contact that we're having, the training, the CIT training, the ride-alongs, the mobile crisis. We often de-escalate a situation before it gets really big and has a very significant impact to people. And I think that's really the heart of the incredible work that we're doing. We have seen a decline over the years in our bookings. So we have folks in the jail who help get people diverted to the community once they've come in. But I think our ability to, in the moment, divert people, make contacts with people to keep them out of the jail has been very successful. But I will say, we've seen from the early 2000s to today, more than 5,000 people who are diverted from bookings every annually. That was our most recent statistic. Oregon State Hospital, Oregon State Hospital provides a valuable service and resource to this community, but there are folks who we can serve outside of the Oregon State Hospital and more effectively. So Sheriff's comments about the work that we're doing with the deputy district attorney has been unbelievable. I just, there's no other way to say that. And again, people are looking to us to see how they might replicate that. But to have somebody who understands internally the legal system and how to help process people through that, who understands the state hospital and can recognize when people are languishing there, helped facilitate a communication across all systems to ensure that people who are in the state hospital are being treated and answer to their charges and are discharged as timely and quickly as possible. That has been huge. The, we get a report from the state, Marion County is leading in so many ways here. So for those, there are individuals who have serious offenses who do need to go to the state hospital to answer the question about whether they can stand trial for their charges. And we have had very little impact on those people. And I think the lens is right there, that we understand that those folks who pose a significant risk need to be there until they have the ability to stand trial. For those lower-level misdemeanor offenses, this work has been profound. We have seen almost a 50% decrease in the number of people who wait for periods of time in the state hospital and, which is exactly what we want. But compared to the statewide average, they're seeing an increase. So our 50% combined with the state's increase of about 38%, I think, is remarkable. And the final thing I'll add in terms of our outcomes here is what we call community restoration. And that's the ability to treat people in the community, to wrap services around them, provide mental health and psychiatric treatment, social service supports, to help them regain their ability to stand trial. But we do that in the community rather than in the hospital. So we've seen our hospital numbers decrease because of that. The Oregon State Hospital reports it costs about $1,000 a day to serve somebody in the state hospital. Those people who are waiting to stand trial spend about 74 days on average. That's $74,000 per individual who goes in the state hospital waiting to stand trial. And over the last few years, in 2013, we treated seven individuals in the community rather than sending them to the hospital. In 2017, we almost doubled that, 12 individuals. So if you take that 74,000 number and multiply that by 12, the impact is very significant. And I think, again, it's, in my opinion, for those low-level crimes, it's the best place to serve people in our community. So again, these combined efforts, I think we're doing some really fabulous things. I'm very honored to work with the sheriff and the district attorney on these efforts. So thank you. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And I just want to take on Carrie to your comments, because this is, I served on the Oregon State Hospital Advisory Board, or have for the past year or so. And I think the average citizen doesn't really understand what goes on in the state hospital. So in, years ago, when I was a little girl, and we would go to the state hospital and sing at Christmas time for field trips and things like that, the majority of people that were in the state hospital were committed civilly. They were, actually, had a friend of my father's whose daughter went to the state hospital, and it was for depression. And you think about now, nobody would go to the state hospital these days for depression. But that was kind of, and I remember Walt, when we were at the Statesman Journal, and you were talking about that law enforcement in olden times could drop people off at the state hospital, right? It was kind of a community resource. But it has changed significantly over the years, and the civil commitments really have been overshadowed by, and they're called, what are the criminal commitments called? I couldn't remember the word.
Assist cases?
No, not the aid, not the aid.
Guilty except for insanity.
Guilty except for insanity. But they have a word for that, and it's escaping me.
G E I.
Well, you know, there's another word for it. But anyway, because it's civil commitments and it's not criminal commitments, but it's something else. So anyway, so those are folks, then, that are actually tried, right? But they are found that they, they are guilty except for insanity. So they serve, in many ways, they go to the state hospital for treatment. It's a treatment facility. But some folks can kind of say, well, they actually serve their time, if you will, in the state hospital. And so that's a very expensive piece, but they have gone through trial. But this third area of folks, the aid and assist, and that's the 370 population, they call them, and that's named actually after a section of statute, right? The ORS whatever, whatever, point 370, right? So those folks can't even go to trial yet because they're not able to aid and assist in their own defense. So they're sent to the state hospital, and as you were saying, at $1,000 a day for an average of 74 days, to get treatment, to determine whether or not they'll be able, then, to participate in a trial to determine their guilt or innocence. And when you look at the numbers, and Jason, Sheriff Myers, sent some statistics over yesterday afternoon for me to look at, and so there's folks involved with felonies, but there's a number of folks also involved with misdemeanors. And so $74,000 for a person to sit in the state hospital to determine if they could go to trial on a misdemeanor seems like not necessarily the best use of resource at the state hospital or anywhere else. And so having Melissa Allison, who's our mental health prosecutor, be able to cull out those cases, and the drop in terms of what the numbers that we were sending over there and the numbers we're sending there now is significant. And when I go to those meetings, there are discussions about how they can get this population to be reduced, because it is, I think it's larger now than any other population, if I remember the statistics. I think that actually the aid and assist population, it was kind of creeping up, and now it's actually overgrown the other two populations, which means that they have less resource to serve people who are civilly committed and people who are there for longer treatment stays, who have been found guilty except for insanity. And they always say to me, no, no, we're not talking about Marion County. Don't, you know, don't you worry about it. We're talking about all those other counties, right? And, but there, we have a ways to go. So anyway, just wanted to kind of add some detail to that so people listening would understand, because it is a little bit of a complex type of status or situation that they have over there, but it's so critical, the work that we've been doing here. And Sheriff, I've got a question for you. You mentioned about the mental health workers in the jail, but my recollection is that when we started stepping up, the assessments that were done on mental health were more kind of an after-the-fact assessment, where if they were observing, you know, if someone came and disclosed that a mental health condition, or if they were observing maybe erratic behavior, that then there'd be an assessment done. But you've kind of moved assessments to the front end. Can you talk about that a bit?
Yeah, so when somebody's booked into the jail, we do two assessments. We do a risk-to-reoffend assessment, and then we do a brief mental health assessment. The brief mental health assessment, that information is passed along to the clinicians if there's somebody that shows signs of mental illness, and they're able to follow up with them. So, yeah.
So everyone gets one of those assessments?
Everyone that comes in the door that's booked in has those assessments done.
And have you seen differences in terms of how that's, you've been able to respond to people with mental illness? I know in many ways, that's, while it's upfront assessment, it's at the tail end of a process. They're actually being booked into jail, but does that help us with?
It does. It helps inform decision-making, so it allows the clinician that if somebody does show indications of having mental illness, they're able to connect with them and connect them to services when they're released. But we also share that information with the deputy district attorney, so that's assigned to this team, so that she's better informed in her charging decision. So, yeah, it's had really positive impacts for this population and for the criminal justice system as a whole.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments?
You go first, you have something.
I always use the same story, because, I mean, there's so many moving parts to this initiative and making a difference. But I know you talked about the, the mental health people riding along with the sheriff or with the Woodburn Police or the Salem Police. And I still, I'm going to say this story, and you're tired of me saying it, but I was lucky, I got to do a ride-along one time with Sergeant Hickam. And we were on State Street in Lancaster and got a call for Aurora on a potential suicide, domestic violence issue, and flew up the freeway at 100 miles an hour and got to Aurora. Fortunately, the Donald exit wasn't jammed up. Got to Aurora, and he, because of his training, had, was able to recognize and defuse the situation at that level. And then within about a half hour or so, up drives a Salem police car to Aurora, and out gets the mental health specialist and the Salem police officer. So we actually got to, I actually got to see how that, nobody went to jail that day. They connected those people up with the services they needed on the phone right then, and somebody, I think, followed up. And it was an example of, probably five years ago, there probably would have been an arrest, and somebody wouldn't have been in a place where they should have been at that time. So I just want to thank you for the great work and the support that happens. And I know we added, since then, we've added one more to Woodburn, and they all work together, doesn't matter where they're at in the county. So it's great to actually see it happen and make a difference, so. We've got a lot of challenges out there, but this is, this is great to see all the collabor, and I think, I think Carrie, you said it, the collaboration, and I underline that, or Walt, somebody said collaboration.
They must did.
Huh?
They must did.
You all did, right? I mean, that's, that's what's great about working here, is that people, people don't have silos, they just say, let's solve the problem, how do we do it?
Oh, I don't have anything in depth. I'm just so pleased with what you're all doing. I'm thinking back to when I first got here, one of the first jail tours perhaps, and it sunk into me that these people don't belong in jail. They need to be protected and get the services that you imply, not to be punished for something that they can't control. And I'm just so pleased to see it moving along and have a slight association with it. A little comment went through my mind, and Walt, not criticizing, mentioned about the cost, well, that really wasn't the important thing to me. The important thing to me is to put the person where they can get what they need and protect themselves again, and maybe not take a seat of somebody, their cell, of somebody that really needs to be there. So I'm just real pleased with all this.
Good. So I just wanted to add one more thing that I had intended to say earlier, and that is that the National Association of Counties has been really at the forefront of making this a national movement. They have workshops on stepping up, they have webinars and technical assistance, and actually, this Day of Action is something that NACO has designated, which is why we're here today, and appreciate, again, the sheriff and district attorney and our Health and Human Services Administrator putting this together. And so we will be highlighted, too, at a conference next week at NACO about what we're doing with stepping up. And we're going to be sending the video clip of your presentation to Washington, D.C., so that they can have a record of us celebrating this particular day. So again, thanks to you, and also thanks to NACO for making this a national issue, which I think is really important. Do you want to make a motion?
I guess it's my turn. Madam Chair, I will move that we approve a proclamation recognizing May 16, 2018, as a stepping up day in Marion County.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 It's approved, so let's see, who would like to read first? Commissioner, you want to read first?
Sure. In a matter of proclaiming May 16, 2018, as stepping up day of action in Marion County, stepping up initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. Whereas counties routinely provide treatment services to the estimated 2 million people with serious mental illness booked into jail each year, and whereas Marion County takes pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of their residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and?
Whereas Marion County has a tradition of leadership investing in effective mental health services and developing partnerships between the mental health and public safety systems, and whereas the National Association of Counties, the Council of State Government's Justice Center, and the American Psychiatric Association Foundation started stepping up to encourage public, private, and nonprofit partners to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in jail, and whereas Marion County joined the stepping up in 2016 to show its commitment to working on the issue locally, and?
Whereas stepping up is hosting a Day of Action on May 16, 2018, for counties to hold an event or participate in local activities to share with constituents in the progress they have made in addressing the prevalence of people who have mental illnesses in their jails, raise public awareness and understanding of this important issue, and emphasize their commitment to creating data-driven, system-level changes to policy and practice to achieve their stepping up goals. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Marion County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 16, 2018, as the Marion County Stepping Up Day of Action, and encourages all county officials, employees, and residents to participate in or host associated activities or events. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that concludes our business today. We have no public hearings. I'll read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where two or three commissioners will be present. We're just concluding our board session here. It is May 16, Wednesday. At 12:30 today, we have a Mid Valley Jobs Council meeting at the Willamette Workforce Partnership Boardroom, 626 High Street, Suite 305 in Salem. From 4 to 6 is the St. Monica Apartments' grand opening at 171 Apple Blossom Avenue, North and Kaiser. And at 6, from 6 to 8 p.m. is the Salvation Army Volunteer Appreciation Event at the Crox Center, 1865 Bill Fry Drive, Northeast in Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, May 17, from 8 to 9 is the City of Salem Marion County Meeting at the Sassy Onion Grill, 1244 State Street in Salem. That will be followed at 9:30 by a work session, Health and Human Services Facilities Planning in the Silverton Conference Room here at Courthouse Square on the fifth floor. On Saturday, at 10:30, the Commissioners will be in the Kaiser Iris Festival Parade. The parade begins at River Road between Lockhaven Drive and Glynnbrook Road in Kaiser. Then on Monday, May 21, at 8:30, is our weekly calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room at Courthouse Square, followed at 9 by management update, also in the Silverton Conference Room, followed at 11 or immediately after the management update meeting with the Board of Commissioners, Chief Administrative Officer meeting with an executive session if needed. All those meetings are on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, May 22, at 8:30, is the Community Corrections Board meeting in the Silverton Conference Room. And then at 9 a.m., a week from today, May 23, Wednesday, we will be back in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. Well?
Short calendar.
Short calendar. Right, and we had an election yesterday. Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. One step, one step at a time.
All right, so you're not a lame duck.
Not yet.
You can come to work now.
There certainly were some surprises, there's no hiding there.
No, yeah.
Definitely some surprises. Anything else you want to talk about?
Well, I am, I think I was hesitant on the Kaiser, but now that I find we get our float with the 175th anniversary.
Oh, so you're going to be there?
I'll be there.
All right. That will be fun.
The weather should be good.
And you know I'm living in Kaiser now, so.
Oh, we get some special billing then? Will they mention that when we go by?
Probably not, but, but I'm just saying that I don't have as far to drive.
I thought you were going to say, all the special people live in Kaiser now.
Well, you know, my husband and I met at McNary High School, so.
See, I knew it. It's good.
Yeah.
I like Kaiser.
Kaiser is great.
I can't think of too much else. No, just the elections, I can't even get the whole list, but I'm, I don't want to say what I'm thinking. It didn't go my way, I can say that, in so many of them. But you got to kind of look at it and see what people are really saying, then, I get that, but I can't get the complete list.
Really low turnout. When you look at the number of people that voted in some of those races, it was, and you think of the number of people that live in Marion County, I think it was, was it 17%? I thought I was looking at, was it?
Oh, I didn't know it was that bad. I had 30 in mind.
Was it 20%?
I talked to the clerk yesterday, they were 20.
20 before last night.
Yeah.
So what'd you say it was?
Maybe, well, I was looking, maybe, maybe it was the eight o'clock, and that 17% of the votes counted, but still, it was really low, because there were only 19,000 people that voted in each race for county commissioner, Democrat and Republican. And so you put that together.
There were some undervotes, but it wasn't that many, yeah.
Yeah, it just was a small.
20,000.
How does overvote happen? I saw that, and I was trying to think what that was. There was overvotes.
You know, that's a good question.
Then mean people vote twice? I don't know what that is.
Well, that's what it sounds like.
Or they, or they voted only for that person?
But that's fine, they should one vote, you can do what you want.
And then that would count, I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't know what an overvote is either. Jane, maybe you can find out for us what an overvote is.
This is just personal me, but I have a friend, he's Commissioner, well, you know him, Tim Josie from Tillamook County, and he's running for a House seat there.
Did he win?
Did he win?
Well, no.
Really?
I looked it up, but I looked up Tillamook County, and he had a nice lead, so I sent him a congratulating note, and he gets right, says, Sam, I lost. And what? And then I forgot that it's Klatzip and Tillamook County. Klatzip is a different look. And that, it was, it was fairly close, but he lost, and that's, that's a big loss for Tillamook.
Commissioner Lichen lost.
That one, too, and I thought.
He lost his Commissioner race?
It looks like it, because it was over 50% too. And I don't, I can't think of too many Commissioners that I would look to more as the archetypical, successful, and knowledgeable Commissioner than Sid there.
Right.
I sat next to him at the meeting on Monday.
I do have an answer on the overvote.
Oh.
Oh, Jane, you are so good.
You knew it all along, or you looked it up?
Yeah, I was going to Google it.
Well, it can happen if people get two ballots, like if you move. So that can happen, but it can also happen if you vote for two candidates in the same election.
Oh, when it says vote for one and you strike two.
Yeah, you vote for two.
Oh.
And what do they do? They just count one of the two, or?
Probably throw it out.
That depends on, I would say the canvassing board would probably toss it, because they can't, they can't determine voter intent.
Yeah.
I noticed, I noticed on write-ins that, that if you spell the name differently.
Yeah, it goes, this is the first time I've ever seen them actually list all of the write-ins.
They did it quick, too.
Yeah, LeBron James and Alfred E. Newman.
It must be the new software they have.
People are not taking this seriously. I mean, not only do we have people that aren't voting, we have people that are voting for Minnie Mouse and Mickey Mouse, and there were a few people there that were listed that I know, that I'm thinking, wow, I wonder who voted for them.
I had my name on one, but it was still behind Mickey Mouse, if you wanted to really gauge it.
All right.
Well, you need to close the meeting.
Okay, well, how about if I close the meeting? Anything else?
Fishing derby this weekend.
What is it, fishing derby? That's legitimate. Yeah, can anyone enter?
Yeah, come on up. I'm going to not be able to fish the whole weekend, though, because I got to, I'm going to come down for the great parade.
That early morning bite's always the best, Kevin.
So, we are adjourned.